Welcome to the Special Board Meeting of Tuesday, August 18th. We call the meeting to order, please, with an opening prayer by Trustee Carabella.
Okay, I chose the prayer for workers. Prayer of Pope John, Pope John the Twenty Third entrusting workers to Saint Joseph. It places all workers under the patronage of Saint Joseph the Worker and asks for his intercession so that we may regard our work as a means of growing in holiness. So you can join me in the sign of our faith, name the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Oh glorious Joseph, who concealed your incomparable and regal dignity of custodian of Jesus and of the Virgin Mary, under the humble appearance of a craftsman, and provided for them with your work. Protect with your loving power your sons and daughters, especially entrusted to you. You know their anxieties and sufferings because you yourself experienced them at the side of Jesus and of His mother. Do not allow them, oppressed by so many worries, to forget the purpose for which they were created by God. Do not allow the seeds of distrust to take hold in their immortal souls. Remind all the workers that in the fields, in factories, in mines, and in scientific laboratories, they are not working, rejoicing, or suffering alone. But at the side is Jesus and Mary, His mother and ours, to sustain them, to dry the sweat of their brow, giving value to their toil. Teach them to turn into very high instrument of sanctification as you did. Amen. Name the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, amen.
Thank you, Helena. May I ask for a mover for the approval of the agenda, please? Trustee Intomasi, seconded by Trustee Trit, it's all in favor. Thank you. Sorry, Paul. Do I have any declarations of conflict of interest? Seeing none, we have one info, excuse me, a few information items. Number one, four point one, update on the HPE from ICE. Director Dawson?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before you trustees, the report, four point one, an update is, we're expected to receive the, the communication for parents next week, as promised in the June first letter from ICE. So we'll send that out to trustees prior to sending it out to our district and to parents. The resources for grades one to eight to accompany the Fully Alive program were written this summer by Catholic teachers and are expected to be reviewed by the theologians and the bishops and delivered to school boards by the end of October, with plans for in-service to teachers November and December. And so the, I've attached the June first letter from ICE, gives a little more detail into what they were developing. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them if I'm able. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Trustee Intomasi?
Well, thank you through you, Madam Chair. I would assume that if we do have a strike, if we did have a strike, then this whole thing would be pushed back even further because if the teachers aren't in their teaching work to rule, would, would we be keeping up with curriculum or would that still be?
Yep, still. If the day goes on, it's curriculum taught, it's the subjects taught, as usual. Even if we were to do in-service, heaven forbid we ever get to, you know, the end of October, November, in-service occurs during the day, so that's part of a teacher's job, and they would attend those in-services. So, strike action would be the only, be the only thing, when they're not, that's in the school, would be the only thing that would deter continuation of curriculum.
Trustee Quinn, Trustee Danko?
Thank you, through you, Madam Chair. So, presuming the parents get something in their hands late August, and school starts the day after Labor Day, the document from the province sits as a resource available to teachers in the absence of ICE. So, when they're not teaching specific programs but discussing issues of sexual health in the classroom, no matter what the class, to what do teachers in our board refer? Do they refer to the curriculum that is being presented by the province, or do they prefer to the previous Fully Alive?
The current Fully Alive program is what's in place for that particular curriculum. The strand, the sub-strand that's in question in the Human Development and Sexual Health is a unit that is in the Fully Alive program that is usually taught in March or April. And the health and phys ed curriculum, there's still that document that talks about phys ed, so they have active living, movement skills, whatever they would be doing in, in phys ed, that document is still active for those teachers to teach phys ed. The healthy living strand, and then the sub-strand of human development and sexual health, that's the only piece that would be, we're waiting for, for the family life. There would be no need for them to refer to the current curriculum document as it sits because they wouldn't be teaching that strand without their Fully Alive book. And so, they could look at it, but I don't see how they would be addressing topics of sexual health and development prior to that Fully Alive unit.
Through you, Madam Chair. So within a grade seven class, they're talking about computers and safe use of computers, and sexting comes up. Do they refer to the, the new revised curriculum provided by ministry, or do they refer to the old Fully Alive which is now not up to, up to code?
Well, I can tell you because myself and Superintendent Nar are involved in the Twenty First Century, that we have units for particular being online safety for grades one to eight, so they would use the things that we were developing from our curriculum department for sexting, for example. It wouldn't be out of that book. We already have little units for, to make sure that our students are safe online as part of our Twenty First Century skills.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, through you to the director, what is, what is the actual status of the new document? Not only in this interim time until the, the new Fully Alive or the new ICE documents are written, but even beyond that? What, what is the stat, is it, is it, is that new curriculum issued by the province still a resource that teachers can draw upon?
If you're talking about family life, our Fully Alive resource is the one that our teachers use for family life. Any curriculum document is available online to look at. Of course, teachers could read, could read the curriculum online for their health and phys ed. Whether they use it, we, we won't be directing them to use it for that particular sub-strand. They would be using it for phys ed, for the skills section, for healthy eating, for personal safety and injury prevention, for substance use and addiction. But when it comes to that particular area in healthy living strand, on human development and sexual health, that's where it's delivered through the resort, the resources that are being prepared to accompany Fully Alive by ICE, that's what they're going to be using. So Fully Alive is still active.
So, would it be accurate to say that the teachers are prohibited from using the new curriculum, family life themes?
Family life themes that are in Fully Alive are still act, that's the ones that they're using. And they will still use the one that's in Fully Alive for the, for the created sexual unit in Fully Alive, but the resources that may be changed from, from the new curriculum that are affected in particular grades, it's, it's not replacing Fully Alive, it's just there to support them.
Through you, Madam Chair. So, so what prohibits them from using any aspects of the new curriculum related to family life? What actually prohibits them from doing?
Just like any, they, nothing prohibits them from using resources off the internet, any, any internet. They're making their professional judgment, but we're saying, we're providing you with this resource, Fully Alive, and when the document comes out to, that have the resources from a Catholic perspective to accompany that particular unit created sexual, they will be directed to use that resource, not things from, from the, from the actual curriculum document that are in question, that are changed, the teacher prompts, or the student responses. the resources are coming and they're to use the, the new resources that accompany Fully Alive. So, that, that will be their, their say. One of the things that we talk about at our first staff meeting, and I think that would answer what Paul's, Paul's saying.
Is your question answered, Paul?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. In relation to my concern about buying or paying for documents that are sourced through one supplier, as in the Pearson Religious Education Text that this, this board agreed to purchase, if and when there are new resources approved by the Catholic, Assembly of Catholic Bishops, and, and I guess accepted by, by our board, are we then forced to buy the documents from one provider chosen by someone else?
I can't, I can't speak to the future right now, whether there'll be one company or two companies that would have resources that would suit our family life program. I know what you're saying, because you, that's, that's what happened with our religion program, but right now, our Fully Alive program is intact, and it's, it's the movement of some of the expectations in that particular strand that needed resources created by ICE to accompany the teacher manual for Fully Alive. But as for predicting the future of when, when and if the Fully Alive program will ever be republished, redone by another publisher, I, I can't predict that.
I'm just referring to the, through you, Madam Chair, through the June first letter. And I guess I'm hearing that, what kind of language, because on the elementary program supports, it just, the third point there, it says supplementary teacher resources. And I'm just getting the sense that, you know, how, how bound are our teachers to teach that? I think it's a little bit about, you know, is it something supplementary that they can use or not? Or can there be stronger language saying, yes, parents expect you to use this?
We will be directing them to do, to use that resource, the proper supplementary resources, that everything will be given to them, they'll be trained, this is what you, this is what you use when you're teaching this unit. As a teacher, it's, I remember years ago where I had to go and create all of my own resources. Mark probably can remember that, you had to go source your own things, and now boards buy beautiful teacher resource manuals with everything you can think of to support your students. It's, it would behoove them not to use it. It's, it's part of, you know, what they, what they would want to use. It saves them lots of time, and it's, it's done by professionals who can think about all the way different students learn. So, I mean, I would, we're going to really drive that point home to our principals, that this is what your teachers will be using.
Trustee Danko?
Through you, Madam Chair. So it's sort of a, along the same theme, but I guess what the question, the more, the broader question is, what latitude do classroom teachers have to decide for themselves which resources are used in a classroom? So obviously, they can use all the resources that are provided, whether they come from the bishops or whether they come from the province. The question is, not, you know, what's in the collection of resources, but you said earlier that you can't prohibit them from using a resource, like the current, like the new curriculum, from being used. So I think that's what people want to understand. We, we know that, that teachers are able to choose the new resources, they're able to choose the new provincial resources, they're able to choose the new bishops' resources. But you can't, if I understand correctly, you can't force them to use any particular resources and not, and prohibit them from using any of those resources in the collection. Is that true?
You're painting me into a corner here, Trustee Danko. They have a professional obligation to what the board is asking them to, to use. A curriculum document is for all, for all public and Catholic school boards, and it's posted, and they can refer to it. Do they use it? I don't know. They might read it for background, they might, they might take bits of it and, for their knowledge, but I, I can't say that they would, they would be prohibited. I'm, I'm not in their classroom, and they are professionals, and if they know that the board wants them to use the appropriate resources, it would be sort of a career-limiting move if they never, if they chose not to, and there were some upset people, and parents, and students. I don't, I, I'm trying to skirt your answer because it's hard to say that they, I could prohibit them because they could refer to it.
If I may. Okay, so, thank you for clarifying that. Through you, Madam Chair. The other question is, so if we have this universe of resources available, whichever ones they choose, what is our practice to respond to parents who, as the premier and the Minister of Education have said, that there is an option to withdraw your students from classes that are controversial, or where the parents are not comfortable with the material in that class? So what is our procedure? What is our best practice? How do we, what have we done in the past, and now what do we plan to do in the future to handle those requests?
That's pretty, pretty straightforward. We've always sent a letter home that comes with the resource, when, just prior to, to teaching that unit, created sexual, and parents have always had the option to not send their child to class for that particular time, if they know in family life that particular unit is being taught. It's not a very long unit, maybe takes a week, might be longer in, in different grades. Taught just the junior grades for that particular unit. And if parents want to withdraw their, their student, they're, as the premier said, they are more than, they are more than justified to do that, and the principals would accept that request.
Through you, Madam Chair. Are we required to provide notice, or do we do it as a courtesy?
We, from what I understand, we've always done it, and perhaps, I think, parents have always had some reservations about what, what might be in that unit. And even, it talks to parents about, this is what we're going to be talking about this week, and offers to send, there's a little parent booklet too, that you can send home with that particular unit, that explains what we're going to be talking about, so parents have an, an idea of, in case somebody, they come home and start asking questions or that the parent wasn't ready for. So, we do it as a courtesy, but it's, it's been our practice for as long as I can remember.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. So if the teaching of that unit can take up to a week, and with the amount and the very strident opposition to the curriculum in many quarters, and presuming that the numbers will increase in those who want to take their kids out of that program, how do we ensure that the kids aren't being punished for not, for not participating in that they are being removed from an educational setting? I don't, what, what is the practice? Do they sit in the gym? Do they play basketball? Or is there education being provided while that program is being taught?
It tends to vary on how many people are requesting that. Sometimes, you know, the, the child, the child would never be punished for the parent request. And either, if there's a lot of students, then it would be up to the principal to figure out, you know, how, how they can accommodate that particular unit, if there's a number of grade threes or fours who are, parents are asking. I think it would all depend on the numbers in the school, and they could either be, you know, put in another class and do some work at the back of the class, or sent to resource, or, you know, another teacher who might be available that's working in a room, they can supervise them while that forty-minute lesson happens. Usually, family life really only happens, like, once a week, so they could either, what I know I've done in the past is, you kind of want to get that unit over with because you don't want, they could be a little silly sometimes when you first talk about it. So, we tend to maybe blitz it for a week, and then it's over, whereas the other family life units tend to happen one day a week. So, teachers tend to choose maybe just to take a week or two to do that unit, and it's done, instead of doing a little bit every week for seven or eight weeks. So they wouldn't be punished, and we would make sure we can accommodate as best as we could.
Trustee Quinn, Trustee Carabella?
Thank you. Just to follow up that, through you, Madam Chair. So it's up to the individual principals to decide what happens in their, in their schools, or is there a mandate from the board as to how we accommodate those kids? Because if you're sitting in the hallway for forty minutes, or in resource, not really sure what that means, that's different from having, you know, formal instruction taking place equal to the peers in your classroom.
Students would never be unsupervised in a school, so they wouldn't be sitting in the hall waiting for the lesson to be over. And, and principals are the supervisors on their site, and they know best what's happening. So, they would, they could determine resources where, like the special ed room, or a room where they know there's a teacher, someone to supervise them, the library, where they could take work, perhaps work that they hadn't finished, down to the library to do that while the lesson's being taught. But never would they be left alone, and the principal would have to determine how many kids, where do I send them? They would do that because their teachers would be telling them, I've got a couple letters here from so-and-so's mom that doesn't want them to participate this week, or this, these couple of weeks, and they would make arrangements to, to serve them.
Trustee Carabella?
I just wanted to say from, you know, I've heard from parents who didn't receive notification. So, this courtesy or something that should be required might have to come into play a bit more to assure parents that they will find out, and not have to be the ones approaching the teacher, when are you going to teach, and when?
I think with the training that's upcoming, that will be a big part of it.
Trustee Intomasi?
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair, to the director. I'm just wondering, say, to Helena's point, some things go home, and some backpacks get properly unfolded and some don't. And I'm just wondering, when we do this, I would assume that we'll have it on our website? We would have at least, could we have a link or something to a, to a general letter that's going out that way? You know, so if parents are informed at the beginning of the year that it's going to be on the web, just in case, you know, Johnny's backpack doesn't get home in full ensemble? Yeah. Some of it stays in the desk, some of it gets in the circular file, and...
Now, the timing will vary, right, from, by, by school. The letters right now are posted on the ACBO website of what parents could receive by grade, and perhaps in the newsletters, school newsletters, if the schools decide, okay, we're going to teach this unit, or this, this division might put out a newsletter to say, we're, we're going to be teaching this unit next week, or in the next two weeks, and here's, here's a letter that we want to send home. We can make sure that we communicate clearly to parents so they have a heads up, and that if they do get a little package in their, lost in the black hole of their, their book bag, that they will have already received notice. Andrea wants to say something.
Sorry, Jane. The other thing I was going to mention is, aside from sending the letter in hard copy, it should be sent through parent notification, because teachers can send directly to the class, so that they get it both ways.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Just on page three of the letter from the bishops, the third sec, the second set of bullets, the two and three bullet, I'm just wondering if you could explain to me about the community stakeholders? I don't understand how are they being involved, or why? Could you give me an example? And I didn't know what they mean by local initiatives to build capacity.
I, I can answer local initiatives to build capacity, that's just in servicing for our teachers, so that everybody gets up to speed on, on what, what the resources are. I think community stakeholders just would mean, if you have parents perhaps that are asking you about what's this all about, I know Jane's asked for some help at a CWL to do a presentation, anybody who has an interest in, in the Catholic school community, we, we post on our website, and then they, that would be available for them.
Four point two is security at public meetings, and I believe, Trustee Quinn, that was you? If you'd like to speak to that?
Yes, please, thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. With the, the recent public meeting where we had overflow capacity, and following that, local trustee town halls, I was concerned about protocols and procedures regarding the use of paid security guards and the possibility of involvement with local police. So I wanted to, through you, Madam Chair, ask the director if she could come back to us with a policy that we might implement at the board for the best practices and procedures for hiring security and dealing with the, the halt in regional police at public events.
I can certainly come back with that at our, maybe upcoming policy meetings with the draft, if you'd like.
Sure.
Through you, Madam Chair. Will that include some accommodations guidelines, or things we can do to, recommendations that we can make to enhance larger groups of people who come to this building? Some sort of external presentation screens or speakers? I mean, we've, we've done that in the past. I know for that, for a certain busing issue five years ago, we accommodated three hundred people here using a speaker device that was in the center of the room that sent signals outside.
I appreciate that, Trustee Danko, and, you know, when, when teachers or educators are provided with feedback and a suggestion, I'm one to take, to take that on, and I've asked staff to look into how we can accommodate such meetings in the future. And you're right, it was a, a big transportation meeting. From, from the understanding was, there was a speaker out there, and it was giving a lot of feedback in here, and can, and like, more like being on the phone when you're talking on the radio. So, what we've, what Andrea and her team has looked into over the summer is, we're going to look at how to do audio, how can we send an audio out to the, to the foyer so that we don't get feedback in here and broadcast, and hopefully, we'll be... And hopefully, we'll be able to do that and test it out in a few different times. Even if, you know, we could have some people go out and see what it looks like. It might take us a few meetings to refine it, but we're going to try that. We're also looking into how can we live stream instead of just getting a YouTube video and then it's posted a day or two later? And Andrea and her team have looked into an app called Periscope. And what Periscope does is it'll live feed and if people can't make it inside this room and they're sitting out in the foyer, if they have a Twitter account and they're following us on Twitter, they can watch and hear what's happening in here. So that would eliminate, you know, the need to see who's speaking. They could, you know, we'd have to have somebody in here looking, you know, taking the video and getting the audio. But they could participate that way and not feel like they've been shut out of this room and closed off. So these are live streamed videos. They're saved for twenty-four hours so people could also look at them. And some of the pros are it's free, so it doesn't cost anything. It's very interactive. It allows us to project out on that monitor too. So people who are sitting over there can also watch it if they don't happen to have an app on their phone. We can show the percentage of total viewers so we can actually figure out how many people are watching and listening by the broadcast. And it's good for iOS, so Apple users and Android as well. And then we can see how many viewers watched, just keep track. Some of the cons of that particular app is it doesn't, viewers can access the website and they can make comments. And they might be, you know, might be spammers or hecklers. But that's what you, that's some of the things that you deal with when you do that. But the good news is that we can block viewers with the swipe of a finger if that heckling or those inappropriate comments. And then they're gone from the conversation. So that's some of the things that we've been looking at so that we can accommodate more people on our site and they feel like they're part of the Board meeting if our capacity has been exceeded in here. Also, if, you know, if we know ahead of time, if we're predicting that we're going to get massive amounts of people or even we're overflowing out into the parking lot. If you have your intel, you know, if you give me a heads up, if you think, you know, some twenty, thirty people are coming and you know other people are coming, I can make arrangements to have it at a bigger site. And that way, it includes more people. We can certainly have it at a school that can accommodate, you know, more than what can happen in here.
Trustee Danko.
Or we could just always be vigilant. Yeah.
I've seen no other questions. I'll move to four point three, the follow-up on the fraud information session by KPMG. Director Dawson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to, maybe I'll hand this over to Roxana unless she prepared the report for the trustees this evening if you want to just mention some highlights. Roxana, please.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. We prepared a short report as an update to the fraud information session that we had in June, at the June ninth Policy Committee meeting. We've been working through the summer with KPMG to, they're putting together best practices and comparing them to our policies and procedures. There may be some suggested revisions to our fraud policy and administrative procedure. The plan is to have something presented to trustees at the October Policy Committee meeting. So I believe it's October thirteenth. We're still waiting for some surveys. So KPMG sent out surveys to a number of school boards that are their clients, municipalities, and universities and colleges. Because it's summer and with all the vacation schedules, they're having some hard time getting the responses. So we're hoping in September they'll get their responses back so they can review their fraud policies if they have any and compare it to best practices and ours. So that's still very much in progress. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address. Thank you.
Thank you, Roxana. Any questions? Trustee Rowe.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Maybe to Roxana. So you're talking about whether they have fraud management policies. Now, every school board now has to have a fraud, whatever, what am I called again? Yeah, yeah, fraud management. So do all school boards have fraud management policies in place now, by now? Or are some still just up in the air about it?
We were the pioneers in terms of our board. In my previous role with the regional internal audit, that was a recommendation to all the school boards. There was no fraud management policy about five years ago in this sector. And this is one of the first policies that had been put together with a lot of consultation. It has been used as a base for a lot of other school boards. I could do a search to see if all of them do have it, but I do not believe they all adopted one. I can't say for sure. Most of them should have it. I could reach out to the internal audit teams to see if they could quickly give me an answer. But last, I've heard not all of them had a policy.
Follow-up, yes. Well, if you ask the regional audit team, that would be sufficient. Just to have an idea of what's going on in this area.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Trustee Danko, did you have a question?
I was trying to come up with one and I might have. I would like an update from the Treasurer on some new initiatives put in place by the financial portfolio to deal with loss and to mitigate loss. Another question is, is there a line item for identifying loss on our financial statements?
I'm sorry, I'm not sure I understand the question. A line to mitigate the loss in terms of a contingency, you mean?
An actual line on the budget?
Yeah, a line item that say if we identify losses, is there a line item to hold it?
Do we have one of those lines on our budget?
It, we do not, we have certain contingencies in the budget. We don't forecast them. The reason we don't forecast is because we would recoup them through insurance. So no, we don't specifically have it for fraud cases.
And maybe Roxana, you might want to talk about what things have changed now in your department with regard to going out to the schools to mitigate the loss?
We have implemented a number of reviews. I've dedicated a lot of time, my time, and I have two financial analysts that are working with the schools. One is dedicated to the school budget. So the Board gives them a budget for supplies and other items, administrative. And one of them is focusing on the school generated funds. They provide them with school visits, so one-on-one support and training. We plan to visit all the schools by the end of this upcoming year. So the financial analyst will have sit down with all the elementary secretaries or secondary financial clerks and the principal or the vice principal and say, "Okay, walk me through how you do from A to Z, all these beauties." And they would say, "This is what I do when I review a bank reconciliation. When I sign a check, I look for this type of documentation." As a result of that, the financial analyst will say, "Well, this is how you should do it going forward. If there is any improvement, they would do it on the spot." So actually show them how to do certain changes. So that's one of the initiatives. We've already done sixteen schools in the prior year. We only started towards the end of the year. And we are going through the rest of them through fifteen, sixteen. We're also doing central reviews. So we've asked all the schools to send their bank reconciliations. And we also have a district level access to their school cash system for the school generated funds portion. And we're looking at their deposits. We're looking at their bank reconciliations. We're looking at their checks. We want to make sure they're all numbered in a sequence, they use the modules, that they've identified cash from checks, that there's no funny transfers, that all makes sense, that the bank reconciliations are reviewed, that there's no debits or credits that are used to balance. So we are doing that on a sample basis for all the schools. And again, if we identify anything that needs to be addressed, we would contact the schools. So for example, we would see, well, a deposit at the school is only being done every two weeks. You should go every week. Or if you get, our procedure says if you get up to a thousand dollars in collections, you should go immediately. So not even wait the week. So that would be a recommendation that we would have for the schools. We also have a financial seminar. We've done a financial seminar every year. It's a full-day training session for the elementary secretaries and secondary financial clerks and for principals and vice principals. In the past, it was one session for all. The feedback was great, but it didn't meet specific needs. So some will have to sit through examples that are specific for elementary or secondary or specific for the oversight role of the principal. And this year, we're preparing separate elementary, separate secondary sessions for the secretaries and the financial clerks, and a separate one for the principal focusing on their oversight role. So there's going to be three different types of trainings. And there's going to be a lot more hands-on. So there's going to be in a computer lab, this is how you do it, this is what reports you should pull, this is how you review certain things. There is going to be good examples and a bad example on what they should be looking at. So we're incorporating those in this year's training.
Thank you, Roxana. Trustee Danko had a question?
Madam Chair, regarding the school visits and the sample visits, how retrospective are the checks?
How many years are you looking at, Roxana, for FGS?
We're only, so we're doing the current year. When we're reviewing, we would review the current year. The auditors are looking at the prior year. They always have to look, not have to, but they pick a sample of a completed twelve-month period. So they would look at the previous year. If there's any indication that there's an inconsistency that we would, a person would need more training, we would be going further. But other than that, we focus on the current year and improving the process going forward. So the role of the financial analyst is to provide support to schools to ensure that the policies and procedures are being implemented consistently across the system.
Trustee Tomasi.
Thank you. I'm just wondering, through you, Madam Chair. When the sample, the sample ones they're doing and you're going in and taking a look at what's there, are the schools getting notice that you're coming in to do the sampling or not? Like, you know, are you giving them a week to prepare? And my concern is, you know, it's like giving somebody notice, you know, "Hey, you better go in there and cover your butt." So I'd just like to know that if they're walking in, you know, no one has any idea that you're coming.
There's a couple of reasons we go in. Some reach out to us that they need support. Either they have new staff or they simply just need some training. And we're more than happy to provide them with that support. And others, we would pick them, we started picking from the list. Any school that was not audited previously, we started with those schools. We did give them some heads up. The whole purpose of going to the schools is that we're not auditors. We are there to support the schools, so we don't want to make them feel uneasy. But we are asking for the records for the entire year. So that's not something they would be able to put together quickly. And if that would be missing, then we would go in and look at a bigger picture and more years, for example. So we are giving them the heads up.
Trustee Rowe, I'm sorry, I forgot you.
That's okay. If I may, first a comment and then sort of related questions. So I'm hoping that the principals in their meeting are reminded how important it is, their sign-off of the reports from the financial officers or secretaries. And then what we've been talking about, the school generated funds, is how are the plans coming to ensure, first of all, that the statements, I think they're supposed to be done three times a year, off the top of my head. Sorry? Yeah, so that they're done, they're posted. And how is the redesign website plan coming so that they would be in a consistent place for every school and easy to find?
We have already presented to the trustees, sorry, to the principals. And maybe I should back up to what the financial services is doing. The other initiative that we took was to set a committee with elementary and secondary principals to go over the process changes that resulted from the prior year audit. And we designed various forms. We also designed the report that should be placed on their website for three times a year, minimum or more, so that they use consistent formats and reports. And we've communicated then the results from this committee to all the principals and vice principals at one of the administrators' meetings. So they have, they know where to find the resources. They have that communication. It will start in September, so for fifteen, sixteen, that should be in place. We should be seeing them at all the schools on their website. And I know that Andrea, her team, is working on redesigning and making sure that they are at the same place for, under the same menu for all the schools.
Trustee Trice.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. Roxana, when you said a heads up, two days, eight days, a week? What's a heads up? What's the timeline on a heads up, please?
It might depend from school to school. We would give them, we're looking at, you know, these few days. If you're available, if your staff is available, we would like to come in. So that could be within a two-week period. Some schools, we've only had two of them that had to cancel for a good reason and then we would reschedule it, say, in a month. But they do have usually a week or two notice.
Okay. Thank you.
I know it's nice to, you want to be able to pop in and say everything's going smoothly and not worry, have to worry about that. Sometimes the secretary will know whether or not there's a lot of things on her desk that she can't stop for a couple of days or there's some reports. So I think they try to be, you know, cognizant of the days that the secretary, especially in the elementary schools, because the smaller ones would only be them. And whereas the bigger schools would have an assistant and they could look after manning the office while the secretary looked after the finances. And they could be training in the second desk there in their school. And further, these are my notes, what Roxana said. But would there be something that's a little bit more in writing that we can expect?
Absolutely. We can make it part of the report that trustee Danko has asked in terms of just the financial services initiatives.
Good. That'd be great. Thanks.
Trustee Quinn.
Thank you. Through you, Madam Chair. You know, just that June ninth Policy Committee meeting with the presentation from KPMG was one of the most informative that I, and one I enjoyed the most in my short time here at the Board. And the second woman who presented, I'm hoping that she is involved in this survey for us because she seemed to be the expert on fraud and policy. So can you tell me if the, I don't have their names in front of me, but there was our regular auditor and then there was another woman. Is she involved? Is she involved?
It, um, Karen Grogan was the expert forensic accountant. And Janet Allen was the, uh, audit, external audit partner that were, and, and we're working with both of them on all the documents. Yes.
And, and I just wanted to ask, uh, in the, the second paragraph of the comments, it says on July 22nd, Business Services and KPMG. So who from Business Services and who from KPMG had the meeting?
It was myself and, uh, Paul McManus, Superintendent of Business Services, and, uh, Karen Grogan and Janet Allen, the two ladies that were here that day.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Roxana. Uh, we don't have to move back in camera. And we have, uh, we have to excuse Diane. Paul, Mariah is obviously present on the phone here. Thank you, Paul. Uh, that's all the absences, I believe. Someone want to move that Diane's excused? Thank you, Trustee Rowe, seconded by Trustee Intomasi. All in favor? Thank you.
Jane, when's our next meeting schedule?
Pardon me?
When is our next meeting scheduled?
September 15th, except if we get called into an emergency to ratify the new contract. Let's hope, pray.
Just wondering, can you give us an idea of what are local issues? What's left?
Trustee, Trustee Quinn asked that and, and they're, they usually don't pertain to any money. It's more like, um, reporting and structural, um. I, I can send you a little note so that maybe just general, what would be considered local. Even though we haven't, it'll be everything else from a collective agreement that isn't on that list that I gave you. Um, that would pertain to what would be a local issue. And it doesn't take long, I mean, normally, I shouldn't say this in case it doesn't work out, but normally, local doesn't take very long once, uh, central is completed 'cause those are the big items.
Well, that would be great, but I have no idea.
Yeah, I will, I will ask HR to send me something to forward to you.
Thank you.
Trustee Quinn?
Sorry, on that, on that matter, I was, uh, appointed by the Chair to be part of the, the Bargaining Committee. When will that committee be struck so that I can perhaps plan ahead?
Well, I think, OECT is the only one that, um, oh, we shouldn't really be talking about this, I don't think, um, in regular Board meeting. But they're the only union that's doing, that said, we're gonna finish central first before we do local. All the other ones have started at various times. So, uh, I'll ask Mr. O'Hara to follow up with you, uh, as part of that committee. Okay?
Okay, seeing no other questions, could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Trustee Carabella, seconded by Trustee Trice, all in favor?
Favor.
Thank you. And Trustee Quinn is going to, uh, close with a prayer.